I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Please call Raul.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrick.
Here.
Mr. Nagel. Mrs. Ruhl. Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzzo.
Present.
Mrs. Turner. Mrs. Dobos.
Here.
Eight members present.
Just got a thumbs up, we can be heard.
Okay, good. All right, I'd like to motion for an intent to adopt the agenda for business items. Moved by Mrs. Ruhl. Seconded by Mr. McGregor.
Voting is open. Mr. McGregor. There you go. Motion carries.
I'd like to announce executive sessions on March 16th, 2021, and March 23rd, 2021, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. At this time, we have several reports. Mr. Evans Zelt, I see that you're on. Would you like to give the student government report, please?
Of course. This week, we have gone back to in-person meetings, which are allowing our members to be able to discuss more actively in person. And we are working on the Staff Appreciation Day in accordance with all of the COVID requirements and restrictions. In addition, we are continuing a weekly Spirit Day to make up for the Spirit Days' loss during online schooling.
Thank you, Mr. Zelt. We also have a PTA/PTO report from Melissa Frank. If you can please unmute and give your report. Thank you.
Hi, I'm the PTO president at George Washington Elementary. This month, we hosted a leprechaun.
Excuse me, can you speak more clearly into your computer? We can hardly hear you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. At George Washington, we hosted a leprechaun trap contest to celebrate St. Patrick's Day. The leprechaun was hidden around the school for the students to find and build traps to catch him. The winner received a Target gift card, a pot of gold, and the leprechaun himself. Last month was Read Across America Day and was celebrated with a dress-up day where students were encouraged to wear items related to their favorite books or authors. Jump rope for heart was kicked off and will wrap up this week as students and families pledged money to raise for the American Heart Association. Spring decorating has started as each student was asked to personalize an egg to hang on the trees outside of the school. The PTO will then surprise the students by decorating with large bunnies and carrots to celebrate the arrival of spring. There is candies fundraisers, and a new fundraiser with the Bethel Craft Company just wrapped up. Tonight is our Tossed Pizza and Wings Spirit Night, and the fundraising committee is preparing a couple of spring fundraising opportunities, as well as planning for a fruit chuck event in May. And I was actually also given William Penn's update, if it's okay if I read it?
Yes.
William Penn just wrapped up our Easter Sarah Sale. Proceeds from this sale benefit the Rosemary Gainer Memorial Scholarship. One senior at Bethel Park High School who is also a former William Penn alumni will be chosen from an essay contest to be awarded a $1,000 scholarship to be used on their higher education. Applications for this scholarship will be available April 1st. A successful Read Across America Week included Drop Everything and Read Sessions, and many Barnes &amp; Noble gift cards raffled off to the students. A successful Spirit Sale was also just wrapped up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the PTO report. It sounds like the PTO's are very busy, as usual, creating activities for our students. Do we have a solicitor's report tonight?
I just have one additional item to share with the board, in addition to the items that I shared in executive session. So I've had the pleasure of meeting with Dr. Walsh this week as a part of his onboarding, actually, it was last Wednesday, and to go over several matters that the solicitor's been working on. Also, wanted to mention that the Centers for Disease Control put out new guidelines on Friday, March 19th, around the distance between desks that they are recommending. Pennsylvania has not altered its recommendation at this point in time, but that's something that we'll continue to review and update the board on.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Walsh.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. First, I want the board to recognize that these colored folders on your tables this evening came from the Grable Foundation, information about their services, supporting education, and the Remake Learning Initiative throughout Western Pennsylvania. This was free literature that they wanted us to share with board members and administrators in the district. Second, Dr. Work's going to speak briefly for you about our ongoing plans and development on summer programs, summer remediation and credit recovery, et cetera. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Work.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Good morning, good afternoon, everyone, evening, everyone. It's my honor to talk a little bit this evening about our summer programming that we're in the process of planning. I'm working with a group of our administrators at every level to develop a program for our students who may need credit recovery and using waterfront learning or another venue for that. We are also looking at Lit Camp and a couple others that we might be using for our ELA recovery and additional work for the summer. This is all offered to the students in Bethel Park through the ESSR grants, money that is available. With that being said, there's some expectation of how we present our summer programming. There has to be a measurable piece to it, which means that there's a pre-test or some type of diagnostic, the intervention or the activity, and then a post for growth. Our intent at this point is to offer something for every parent that would want something, whether it be a remediation program or a skill deficit piece with concern, whether it be credit or grade recovery or course recovery, or whether it be extension for parents that might be interested in just having their kids participate in a program. Right now, what that looks like is also can be available in different formats, such as in-person, online, and we'll see where that goes. Right now, we are looking for, as we develop our program, we will be looking for volunteers from our teaching staff and paraprofessional staff to provide the instruction as we go forward. But we also are looking for the opportunity that that could also be developed in an asynchronous fashion for kids to work on at their leisure to continue learning over the summer. So we're real excited about that. My team that's working on this right now, our intent is to have something to the board at the first meeting in April. We have some meetings scheduled with some companies this week, and then we will make a decision and bring that forward to you of what we explored and why we chose the direction in which we went.
Can we ask questions? Ms. Walsh? So I don't know whether, have we decided whether we're going to do the PSSA in the spring or in the fall?
We are doing the PSSA in May.
At the regular time, so we'll have, when do you get those results back?
We typically will get those back in July.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is that some people have expressed concerns about whether students will be ready for the next grade level, and how are we going to assess that? And if they don't do any remediation over the summer, are teachers going to, is there a plan for addressing students at the beginning of the year also?
There is. We've spent some time, one of the advantages of having asynchronous Fridays is spending some time on curriculum and looking at what that pathway of what the teachers, I'll give an example, a teacher in grade two may very well, and we'll be spending time on this as we move forward, may very well get to a certain piece of their curriculum, and they kind of keep the teacher that is receiving the kids in grade three. So there's some adaptations that are going to go through on our curriculum on making sure that we're meeting the needs of the students as we move forward. The PSSA is one data point, but we also use DIBELS. Our curriculum assessments and unit assessments are also part of that data piece to determine the readiness of the students moving to the next grade level. With that being said, I don't believe that this is going to, the summer is not going to be the end-all answer to this. It's going to be a process that we're going to be working on, and there is going to be implications with curriculum and teachers meeting with other teachers to network and making sure that we're moving the kids forward, and with that growth mindset, meeting them where they're at and growing them forward.
Yeah, that would be, my concern too, is that we have some kind of way to assess where they are at the beginning of next year, so we know what has to be reviewed or taught that what they didn't get to. I mean, it seems to me to be really critical, especially this year.
At the elementary level, our typical, we typically do the DIBELS early on with reading. We also had teachers take advantage of the CDT's, which is diagnostic in nature, and we use some curriculum-based assessments to determine where kids are. Many of our curriculum right now, the Wonders curriculum and our MyMath curriculum, there's a pre, you know, test to kind of give, a formative test to kind of give the teacher an idea of what skills the kids need more work in. So it's an ongoing, data-driven instructional process that PSSAs helps with that, but quite frankly, a lot of times, the teachers get more information by the assessments in which they do in their classrooms and then move the kids forward with the curriculum-based things that we purchase with our curriculums. As far as passing. Sure. Sure. The process is really very similar to the way that it is in every school year, except that we're probably looking at more kids that will be recommended for a more stringent summer program. At this point in time, I'll be honest with you, there's not a lot of recommendation from our teaching staff to hold back our elementary students. There's a handful of those. The intent is to adapt our curriculum and our teaching to make sure that we're meeting the kids where they're at. They are not, you know, it's kind of the lingo is that kids are behind, but they're not behind. They're right where they're supposed to be under the circumstances in which they are in. And we are going to develop our educational program to meet them where they're at and grow them. So, you know, it's, we have to look at, you know, this process is a little bit different because it's not apples to apples. It's not your typical year. A kid this year has a totally different second grade year, if they're a second grader, than any other second grader has ever had in their life. And that's just the way it is, and that's where we're going to meet them and we're going to grow them. So, you know, I want to strongly suggest to parents, don't panic, don't be concerned if you feel that your child may not be exactly where your older child was. We're going to work very diligently and make sure that as the kids develop through the program, that they have every skill that they need to be successful in whatever they choose to do next. And it's going to be a process, not necessarily a one-and-done. Summer isn't going to, you know, answer all of the questions. It's going to help. We've not had a summer program before, so there is no doubt in my mind that it's going to be something that's going to put an advantage for the kids as a whole. But I think, I think when this is all said and done, and when we look in reflection with hindsight, we'll say, you know, we went through that horrible time, but the kids are right where they need to be as they go through our system.
Okay, so we're looking forward to that report.
Absolutely.
Next time.
I just have one question. Are we looking at doing it remotely? Are we looking at bringing the kids into the classroom this summer? Are there going to be options for parents?
There's, my goal is to provide options. The issue that I'm concerned about is do we have adults, enough adults, to provide those options? So there's going to be opportunity for our current teaching and paraprofessional staff to provide that option as an auxiliary opportunity. I also will reach out, and I've already preliminarily reached out to our subcaller who takes care of our substitutes and said, you know, I'd like to invite some substitutes if we need them once we go through the process. So what we're going to do is develop the program. The plan right now is to develop the program, put it in a flyer, advertise it, send it out to parents, explain what we're doing, see how many kids we have, and what option the parents would like to have. Then we'll post for adults to meet those needs, and then we'll plan accordingly.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. And the second part of tonight is Dr. Jensen's going to talk to us about updates to the Health and Safety Plan. I think Amy mentioned just a moment ago, some changes at the national level, and I think everybody's curious to know what changes might impact here on the local level. And if you would also include, if you don't mind, including also some of the numbers you're seeing through Allegheny County over the last two weeks.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Walsh. You're spot-on with what Mrs. Undal said. You know, there's a lot of buzz out there about what CDC is saying, but until the Allegheny County Health Department, and particularly the Department of Ed Health Department adopts the changes, we're still in status quo from where we've been for the last couple months. So let me start with some of the numbers. As you may know, and I think everyone's pretty well aware, we're still currently in the moderate transmission range, which is moderate is below 10%. Allegheny County overall is at 6.9%. Its last seven-day average is at 5.3%. Now, that differs with Bethel Park, and once again, I'm only speculating, but I believe there's not a lot of random testing going on at Bethel Park, and I believe that a lot of folks that are not well are being tested. So we're still at a pretty high rate, but it's about, you know, three out of 10 folks are designated as positive. It's at a 27.69% rate. So Amy referred to some changes that came along on March 19th. I'd like to just back up just a little bit before that, a week prior to on March 12th, CDC did talk about quarantine, and that two particular pieces, and I get a lot of questions around, you know, do I have to quarantine? I'm already vaccinated. Do I have to quarantine? I have the antibodies. And as stated earlier, until PDE adopts those pieces, we're still, yes, everybody's got to quarantine. And there's a little bit of conflict on the amount of days. Let me explain that too as well. So right now, CDC said on March 12th that if you tested positive in the last three months, you don't have to quarantine. If you are fully vaccinated, you do not have to quarantine. That's a national decision. Now, at the state level, we're still at 14-day quarantine, however, this is what's interesting, you're at a 14-day quarantine, however, after 10 days and you have no symptoms, your quarantine's over. And then there's another caveat. If you get tested on day five after you've been told to quarantine, and you have a negative test, you can come back to our school system after day seven. So on day eight, you get to come back two days earlier. So it's eight, 10, 14, pick with whatever works for you. No, but it's got to be related to where your situation is. Plus contact, that's been an issue too, that I think folks sometimes get a little confused. And basically, we're talking about CDC says six, within six feet for a total of 15 minutes, a total of 15 minutes. We're saying, the state is saying, six, within six feet for a collected, not added, you can't add up all your time during the day, but for a continuous 15-minute stay. If you have direct or physical contact, like a hug, so they're frowning against hugs, and if you share eating utensils, not good. And if by chance, somebody sneezes or coughs directly on you, not a good thing. So once again, stay at home for 14 days, but at the end of 10, with no symptoms, you come back. If you test on five, you can return on day eight. So back to where Mrs. Undal mentioned about March 19th, distance recommendations, this is where the conversation's occurring. Now, I want to be clear that it's three feet for elementary students at CDC level, and for middle school and high school, it's still six feet. So even if we adopt, you know, we have that issue. And then, of course, if someone's a positive case and we adopted three feet, the regs still say six feet for 15 minutes. So, you know, we could be inviting more folks to have to quarantine if we start to cluster in groups of three feet or closer, obviously. CDC says six feet of distance between adults. So even though you heard the three feet between adults, still, in common areas, six feet. When a mask cannot be worn, six feet, particularly eating, six feet. Activities should, as much as possible, go outside. When possible, indoors with proper ventilation, you know, try to do the six feet. And the last part that I want to mention, that the travel restrictions, as you know, that has been lifted, and there's been no reinstitution of travel restrictions. So that's basically it. Right now, we currently have one school that's going, Washington, is closed, going to open up on Thursday. IMS unfortunately had a fourth case today, and they will close tomorrow, close Thursday, asynchronous Friday. One other question too, that might have been coming up because there's been some confusion, I want to be clear about this too, is how are we counting this 14-day window? Because if you look at the days we posted on the web versus when students are in school, that's the big piece. I'll give you one simple example. I have a student that's tested positive, but that student's been remote. Are we counting that case as a positive case? No, we're not. So if the student hasn't been in school, has been in school 10 days ago, and they're positive, they're still within the 14-day window, but they're not a current case today. That case is already 10 days old, has four more days before it kicks out of active case to non-active. So I just want to be clear about that too, because there's been some confusion about how we're reading this and how we're doing it. We are still following the guidelines based upon large, medium, and small-size schools. And once again, small is two to four, medium, which is our middle schools, four to six, and the high school is six or more. And then when they get to 11, it's up to 14-day closure. Okay, that's pretty much it. Sorry if I took a little longer, but I wanted to be clear about that.
Well, we've had so many questions. Thank you for clarifying all that, and particularly to our solicitor and to you also. Thank you for clarifying that although the national went to three feet, state and county still say six, so we're still maintaining that.
Yes, and they said three feet at elementary too. People heard three feet, and they thought, oh, well, everybody can go three feet. No, that's not what they're recommending. It's elementary-based.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to add one other thing to your presentation, if you don't mind me jumping in here, but we sat in on these Thursday Allegheny County schools, and the Health Department meet on Thursday afternoons to kind of keep our finger on the same pulse. And I was surprised to hear last Thursday that they were having an all-time high of positive rates among students in Allegheny County. Last week was one of the highest weeks on record for student cases in the county, and they were seeing a trend upward, which is contrary to the national trend, that the numbers were coming down thanks to the vaccine. And so the virus seems to be moving to younger and younger ages. In fact, I think the Health Department's number is that the average age back in the fall and winter was 50 years old. It's now down to 30 is the average age of a positive case. So we're seeing a trend that the virus is moving to younger and younger people, which means we continue to maintain our Health and Safety Plan, continue to follow those guidelines, continue to keep everybody safe, 100% of the time is our number-one priority. Thank you.
I can ask one question. Dr. Jay, so that, when you were talking about the example of the remote student, do you also look into if they're into extracurricular activities?
Yes. We count all extracurricular activities. We do contact tracing. So what we do is we check the student first to see, are they involved in extracurricular? So we, obviously, they're contacted during the regular day and then after-school hours. So we've had some students recently that have been in sports on a Friday. We don't count the Thursday as the last day in school. We count the Friday. The last time they were in a Bethel Park activity or classroom, that's what we count.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
All right. At this point, let's move to the public comments on agenda items. From what I can see, the three written comments should be read after the meeting because they don't deal with anything on the agenda. But Mr. Reyer, do we have any phone calls? Phone calls? Okay. And I forgot to announce that at the beginning of the meeting. Again, the phone number is 412-851-6911. If you'd like to call in, you can do that for the public comments also at the end of this meeting. We have one phone call coming in. So we need to make this as more efficient as possible for the future. as possible for the future.
Now live in the boardroom.
Hi, it's Sharon Janasik, 4314 Anna Street. I was calling to say thank you so much to the board for supporting the stand after school extracurricular activity, number five on your consent agenda, and including a good stipend for teachers so that we have good sponsors to move forward with that program. That's so very important as we move forward in the current times. I also want to say welcome to Dr. Walsh. We're happy to have you here in Bethel Park. I know the community is excited to have you here and to meet you. And hopefully soon, we can all meet together and get back to moving Bethel Park together as a community. Thank you so much and welcome.
Thank you for your comments. Any other phone calls?
There are no other phone calls.
Okay. So we'll move now to the business items. We have 23 items on our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve them? Moved by Mr. Christensen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Of these 23 items, do we have any questions regarding our caller right now and the stipends that we have for stand? Just a reminder that the stipends are one amount for as many sponsors as a particular building would have. So it's not per person stipend. It's to be shared among sponsors. And the tree Pittsburgh is going to plant trees with our students and our faculty at three schools. Neil Armstrong Memorial and...
IMS.
IMS. Thank you, Mr. Fierce. And I know I probably asked this many times, but we don't actually have drivers ed in our school. So what are we actually approving with the Kennedy Driver School?
I can address that.
Oh, sorry.
With the Kennedy School, basically, we, they're through the Recreation Department. So we approve them to come in. They do hold classes and have held classes in the high school library. So students do the theory part and then they actually do the driving part, which includes that three-point parking out in the lot. So, yeah, we facilitate the Kennedy School through the Recreation Program, through the municipality.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions. Does anyone else have any questions on the consent agenda items? Okay.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Spicuzza, will you take Facilities and Services?
Personnel.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. McGregor, I scrolled right down.
What did I miss?
Mr. McGregor, will you please take Personnel Committee?
Yeah, we have eight items underneath Personnel Committee. You want us to go through one by one?
I think we could do them all.
Okay, so I'll just read the list. Number one is approval of extra duty responsibility program for 20 and 21. Number two is appointments or appointment of personnel. Number three is a change of assignment. Number four is approval of staffing changes. Number five is acceptance of resignations. Number six is approval of sabbatical leave of absence. Number seven is the approval of COVID-19 Compensatory Services Program staffing. And number eight is approval of resolution regarding an employee.
Is there any item here? I'm sorry, I didn't realize what some of those items were. Is there any item here that anyone wants to hold out from the overall?
Sorry, I just have one question. Anthony, were the changes that were made to the job description that's attached?
Correct, yeah, it's attached to the motion. You'll see it, and the changes were made that we discussed.
Thank you.
No problem.
In that job description, who, where does the hiring, firing, and review of coaches fall? Who does that?
Athletic director.
Okay.
For the coaches in regards to, you know, it would be also the human resource and the administration team up here. But the overall overseen, it would be the athletic director.
Okay.
That's who this person would report to, with the high school principal also.
Okay.
Thank you for those changes. What they are referring to is the opening of the position for the Assistant Athletic Director, what Ms. Turner and Mr. Christensen were asking about. Okay, so Mr. McGregor made a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Christensen seconded. Any other questions or comments on those items, eight items?
Mrs. Douglas. Number seven, regards to approval of the COVID-19 Compensatory Services Program staffing. This is additional to what we're planning for the summer as discussed by Dr. O'Rourke. Is it a little brief, Dr. Walsh, or?
Correct, it's in addition to this. Would be providing services for special education students to make up for what they may have missed during a closure or remote learning, et cetera.
Thank you very much.
And this will actually happen throughout the school year, not during the summer?
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. And now, Mr. Spicuzza.
Thank you, Mrs. Douglas. There's one item this evening under Facilities and Services Committee, and it's the purchase of a pro groomer grooming machine. And I'm sure that's really a great definition, isn't it, or an explanation? Nick, if you could just give us like the Cliff Notes version of that?
Sure thing. All of our grooming material for our softball, baseball fields, they're all been repaired, makeshifted together. It's kind of replace every single piece of equipment we have. We're a one-stop shop. It also has a leveling aspect to it, which will all in all just create a more safe environment for all of our athletes. And it's just basically replacing old and inefficient equipment. Thank you.
I move the following, purchase of a pro groomer grooming machine.
I need a second? Seconded by Mr. McGregor. Any comments or questions? The first time I saw it, I'm like, why do we need a pet groomer? And then I looked at it again, and I'm like, okay, that's not a pet groomer. Okay, any questions? Mr. Christensen?
At once. I know what they're about, yeah. So I move to approve the tax exoneration of three parcels, parcels in Bethel Park for the extension of the Montour Trail.
Second. A move by Mr. Christensen, seconded by Ms. Turner. And any comments or questions about this? Thank you for putting it together, Ms. Undel.
Just a point of information. The Montour Trail Council has reviewed and has approved the form of the resolutions. And so if they're approved, we'll move it forward to send them to the tax collector. Make sure they have that on file.
And I did note in here that the exoneration of the real estate tax is conditional upon all three being transferred to the Montour Trail. They cannot exonerate the taxes and then sell it on their own.
That's correct. The taxes will not be exonerated until Montour Trail Council is owner of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess the other comment I had was, if Peter Conkey's listening, nice job being persistent through many years. This is a good cause, so thank you, Peter.
Okay, are there any more phone calls that have come in?
There are no more calls.
Okay, we have four public comments. I will read the first one. Do you see them all?
We can't, yeah. She even made you co-owners of the forum.
I'm through.
Right. Okay, I'll read them then. The first one is from Michelle Miller, 29 Oribon Trail. And this comment is, please consider making ninth graders eligible to participate in band through majorettes, not just instrumentally. Neighboring districts such as Upper St. Clair, Thomas Jefferson, and South Park have ninth-grade majorettes. Bethel Park Recreation has been offering several baton classes for many years and is now has an active, thriving, competitive twirling team. These programs have trained young twirlers to perform at a level that matches that of a majorette. Most, if not all, other Bethel Park High School sports, extracurriculars, start in ninth grade, including marching band instrumentalists. Twirlers should be given the same opportunity to pursue their sport throughout their entire high school career as well. The district currently owns a surplus of majorat uniforms, but over the past several years, there have only been three to five twirlers in the entire marching band. Because the district already owns the uniforms, it would be little to no cost to change the eligibility grade. Just as other ninth-grade band participants do not attend the spring trip, ninth-grade majorettes would not attend either. Previously, the Bethet program has lowered its tryout age during periods of low participation. After a brief discussion with the band director, I was informed that the school board directors would be responsible for making this adjustment. Again, it costs the school district nothing to allow ninth-grade twirlers to try out. The resulting positive impact by allowing them to pursue their dream and be included is priceless. Not only would it benefit the individual twirlers, but the band would gain additional members who can enhance the overall performance. There are a number of eighth graders who would love to have the opportunity to try out. Would you please consider opening the tryouts this spring to those who will be ninth-grade students in the 2021-2022 school year? And the next one is by Tracy Cassievich of 3344 Appell Road. Please consider allowing freshmen to twirl in the marching band. My daughter is in eighth grade and will be a freshman. She's been taking baton lessons for years and would love to try out to be a majorette her freshman year, as opposed to waiting an entire year. She is an athlete who's worked extremely hard and has attended multiple competitions in effort to advance her confidence and skills to someday become a majorette. It is difficult for her to have a twin sister who is able to try out for Bethel Soccer and Lacrosse her freshman year, yet she will not be able to try out for her only sport. This is also a sport that has changed her life. She was more of an introvert and we never thought she would join a sport. Since joining an elite twirl team and being with other hard-working athletes, she has come out of her shell and feels a sense of purpose. She's a child who would be definitely benefit from starting out as a majorette when she enters high school, opposed to having to sit out a year. High school, as hard as it is, and I believe being part of something so special as the marching band, freshman year could only help build self-confidence. It's never too late for change as we, as a community, have recently seen constant change. Please take into consideration that all children, athletes, have had an extremely difficult year with virtual, remote learning, and COVID. I'm asking you now to please take all of this into consideration and support allow freshman students to try out for the marching band majorat position. Thank you. The next one is from Ananita Weiss, 5847 Wallace Avenue. I would like to propose the board reviews the majorat role of not allowing freshmen to try out for the majorettes. My daughter is several years away from being eligible. However, one of the main reasons we have her in twirl is to provide her the opportunity to be part of the majorat's band when she enters high school. To know the opportunity would not be available to her until sophomore year does not make much sense. Thank you for your consideration. Actually, that's all, because the fourth one is the same as the third one. Let me refresh to make sure there's no other responses and there are no phone calls?
There are no further phone calls.
Okay, and I don't see any further responses. I just want to comment on this. This isn't something that comes from us as a decision. This would come as a recommendation from the principal and the band director. So if they want to open it up, please let us know in the future, or next month or whatever. But it's all, anything about that has always come from the high school principal and the band director. It doesn't come from us top-down. So parents, it's in the works. We'll see what happens. All right. Board comments, any comments?
I tell you what, I agree with those emails. If a ninth grader can make varsity baseball, I can't, you know, a ninth grader, oh, actually, an eighth grader try out for the ninth grade majorettes. So I'm all for that.
Is your microphone on?
International competitions are coming in. First thing, there seems to be a large group through the Recreation Program now they want to be able to enter the high school in the same year because the cheerleaders have that opportunity, but the majorettes don't have that opportunity. But you do have a big group coming up towards.
And I don't know whether Bethets...
Can't try out until after their ninth grade year.
Right, and so you'd have to do, you'd probably have to make it consistent.
Yeah, because they could start them in the seventh grade. That cheer can go from Recreation right into our seventh grade program, the cheerleaders. But the majorettes, the twirlers, have no line that way.
Right, but what I was saying is that the Bethets, they can only go in their sophomore year also.
Yeah.
And that's only on...
So any consideration for change is going to have to address probably both groups.
Right.
Other board comments? Any other board comments?
Yeah, I do. Steel Center.
Yes, please.
Steel Center is going to offer a summer program for the VOTech students. They've sent out a survey to see how many would take the opportunity to come back in the summer because some of them need their certifications. The other thing is that the AIU had 7,700 educators vaccinated in Allegheny County during their session this past week. 95,000 across the state. So we're getting there. Maybe we can go back to school. The other thing is I want to mention that, I don't know how many of you saw the Point Park University. It'd be the first university in the region to offer their student teachers now the opportunity to learn about remake learning and maker space. So that's a good step for the region.
Thank you very much. Any other committee reports? I forgot to add that into the agenda. Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Walsh, for creating an efficient meeting for us tonight. And I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. A move by Mr. Christensen. That goes by Mr. Christensen, seconded by Mrs. Rule.
Motion carries.
Meeting is adjourned.